Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, and we're glad you're joining us here this evening. We'll begin by calling the meeting to order at an invocation by Pastor Eric Tang, Shiloh United Methodist Church. Pastor Tang?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, I just want to say thank you for the privilege to give the invocation. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you today with grateful hearts, seeking your presence in this place. You have entrusted this board with the responsibility to lead and to serve. As this meeting begins, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. We pray for your wisdom to guide all decisions, your love to shape all actions, and your peace to govern all discussions. Bless each member of this board with clarity of thought, compassion and deliberation, and integrity in every decision. Grant the board unity of spirit, and let all that it does bring honor to you and benefit the town of Kernersville. Bless our community indeed, protect those in need, and unite us in purpose as we strive to do what is right in your eyes. We ask all this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. You may be seated. So it's my honor as mayor to recognize significant accomplishments, events, people, and causes in our community. And one of those people is our town clerk, Mr. Keith Hooker, who's been with the town of Kernersville for many years now. And the town clerk is one of the longest-serving positions in municipal government. You can actually have a community incorporated with very few staff people, and amongst those very few, there will always be a town clerk. So he keeps the records and attends a lot of training and has involvement in the regional associations. And our clerks in the past also are involved with the national organizations of clerks, so that we bring the best information to the town of Kernersville as to records retention and to the procedural rules for sending out notices and all the various functions we do, and keep us in compliance with the Sunshine Laws and good practices for records management in the state. So Keith, we appreciate your service, and we'd like to recognize you as part of Municipal Clerks Week, which begins Monday.
Oh, good. But thank you.
I'm sure everyone wants to shake your hand.
Yes.
We also very much appreciate the involvement of our deputy clerk, Beth Price, who'll be here on a different occasion, but is not here this evening. Thank you, Keith. All right, we are moving on to our regular meeting. So there's a public hearing message printed on the agenda, but tonight we don't happen to have any public hearings. We do, however, have a public session, and the first item on the public session is speakers from the floor. In signing up in advance, I'd like to recognize Matt Sim. And excuse me, Mr. Sim, I want to make sure your microphone's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The board and fellow citizens for giving me a couple minutes to speak. I apologize in advance if I go over my time, but I feel it's an important subject. So last month, we were discussing the recent bills in the NC House and Senate, seeking to change and lessen the authority of locally elected officials. Now, what I want to say is that this is an important issue that I don't think many citizens are aware of, or at least the citizens that I've encountered. So first of all, I have tried to contact as many senators and representatives of our great state, to no avail, of course. They're good at taking messages, not so good about returning calls. So, and then I want to tell a short story about what happened when I tried to inform about 50 or 60 fellow citizens of the West Ward of Winston-Salem at a recent evening session. So I merely tried to inform the other citizens that these bills seek to limit the amount of citizens that can speak at zoning boards, that they want to turn these proceedings into quasi-judicial proceedings. That, heinous to me and offensive is that they want to make our local officials civilly liable, punitive, and in plain terms, make developers, give developers the right to sue our local government officials in court and make them personally financially liable, which means money out of their own pocket, which nobody signed up for. So at this meeting, after I said my piece, another gentleman spoke up, and he said, guess what? Twenty-five percent of the reason that we don't have affordable housing is you people, the government. I had to laugh at that. And then I got an even larger laugh when he identified who he is. He said he's a 40-year member of Housing Developers Association. So, little bit of bias there, and he didn't have any facts, okay? And then when I tried to speak up and say, you got 15 or 16 bills, half of them don't even mention affordable housing, and I was silenced, because in that forum, we're not allowed to debate. And there was no recording, unfortunately, so I want to make clear what my position is, since I was not allowed to make my position clear in the last meeting. So at the last Winston-Salem Town Council meeting, there was a zoning issue for a 12-pump gas station, isolated in a single-family home residential neighborhood. The developer, of course, was able to hire a traffic engineer to say, oh, there'll be no increased traffic, negligible inconvenience to the neighborhood who only have one road to exit their neighborhood. Many senior citizens, homeowners, tried to speak, but of course, they can't afford to hire a so-called expert to dispute the developer's expert. And so what happened? They said their piece, the expert rebutted, and the council pretty much voted unanimously unanimously to allow this new 12-pump mega gas station and convenience store right outside their single-family home neighborhood. No guarantees of improved sidewalks, or, you know, beautification, no guarantee that there won't be any commercial creep. So, to wrap this up, okay, we have these bills, and they say they're bipartisan. They're, sure, they're bipartisan in terms of Republican and Democrat, but what unifies them is that most of these people sponsoring the bills and in favor of the bills are developers themselves and some of the richest people in our North Carolina House and Senate. And again, I have to reiterate that Jeff Zenger sued his own town of Lewisville, and rather than go to trial, he won $2 million from the town of Lewisville. This is not Charlotte or Raleigh. This is Lewisville, just like Kernersville, just like Clemmons. Like, $2 million is a huge amount, okay? So to wrap this up, what can we do? Like I've said before, the only thing these people understand are votes and money. So what I recommend is that we temporarily change our voter affiliation to unaffiliated, to, you know, make them aware that we're unhappy. The last thing we need are more government decisions from real estate moguls. We're all seeing the effects of that in our country. So, as a conservative, I think most conservatives believe that the truest form of government is local government. You all see the people, you live among the people, you know what's best for the people. Like I said, we're not Charlotte, we're not Durham, we're not Raleigh. What goes for them doesn't necessarily go for us and keep the, you know, uniqueness of our small towns. Okay, so I'm sorry, I know I'm over time. So to wrap this up, the idea that the state says zoning authority is only given to these boards by their authority, that, you know, is laughable, because this is the system that the voters support, okay? The idea of taking away local zoning authority from locally elected officials, we have a saying for that where I'm from, "That dog don't hunt." Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Swisher, do you want to comment?
Not really, other than I agree with what he said.
Maybe explain for the audience what bill he's talking about.
Excuse me?
Maybe explain for the audience what bill he's talking about.
Yeah, it's House, well, I mean, there's probably now, I think Jeff Zenger said 34 different bills in his email back to Mayor Horn and Mayor Morgan in Lewis, Mayor Horn in Lewisville and Mayor Morgan. There's up to 34, 35 different bills that basically does just what Speaker mentioned. It restricts the authority of local government. The biggest one that has really gotten everybody stirred up is House Bill 765. There were a couple Senate bills before that, a couple House bills before that. And basically, I mean, all of them together will restrict the zoning authority, particularly when it comes to residential zoning in Kernersville and all municipalities across the state. There is some difference from municipalities based on population, but it will restrict it in the sense that local boards will no longer be able to, quasi-judicial, y'all have a legislative process now when hearing a zoning case that will become quasi-judicial, and there's a big difference in the two. It's what it does do, as the Speaker mentioned, is it takes away pretty much the ability of citizens to come before the board and be opposed or in favor of either one, a development, because it's quasi-judicial, you have to be sworn in, you have to present facts. So if someone came up, as we've had in a multitude of cases through the years, somebody comes up and their argument is, you know, traffic's going to be a problem, or water runoff is going to be a problem. Going forward, if it becomes quasi-judicial, they will have to have expert facts and testimony in that case. So, you know, it does that. It makes it mandatory that municipalities of less than, I think, 100,000 people, you will be required to allow five units per acre. You know, we don't know if that breaks down to two and a half or three per half acre, we don't know how that goes. You know, now the new thing is, you'll have to put a fiscal note on text amendments about how the text amendment will impact the cost of housing and all of that. Nobody really knows what that will entail. I do know we don't really have anyone on staff that can tell you what it will cost from a construction standpoint. So just a lot of different things there with all of those different bills. And he's exactly right, is what I've told the board multiple times. They're using the housing crisis and affordable housing as the driving force behind this. None of the, none of the language in the bills, none of the new requirements, really address affordable housing. As he said, one of the speakers, it's a 40-year member of the, you know, Builders Association, got up and said the increased cost is due to the restrictions placed on it by local governments. We've done some rough estimates. When you take all those restrictions off, it might be, depending on the number of houses in a neighborhood, it might be $10,000 a house. Well, let's face it, a $390,000 house is really no more affordable than a $400,000 house. It's cheaper, yes, but it's not really more affordable. If it's more affordable and that $10,000, and it could in some situations, if that $10,000 makes it to where the person can buy the house, in all likelihood, in four years, when they do the property tax revaluation, they're going to lose the house, because the tax value's going to go up, their escrow's going to go up, and they're no longer going to be able to afford a house. So if they're that close, it's not affordable. The only thing in any of the bills that truly gets to the crux of affordable housing and the housing shortage is requiring more units per acre. Because if you've got five units per acre versus three, you know, that breaks down the cost per lot, and it allows more loss. If you've got a 100-acre tract, you get 200 more houses. So yes, that does address the housing supply. It does address, to some degree, the affordability of a house. Is anything in those bills going to drop the price of a house from $400,000 down to $250,000? In my opinion, no. I don't think it drops it anywhere close to that. I think you'll be lucky if it gets it below $350,000. So, you know, you all have seen articles we've sent. It's pretty much what the bill does in the opinion of everyone I've talked to. It just puts more money in the pocket of the developers in the long run. And he's correct, the ones that are supporting the bill are the developers, and they're the realtors. The members in the Houses and the Senate that have introduced the bills, just so happens that the largest contributors to their campaign are the realtors and the developers. Could be a coincidence. I don't know. I've not researched. That's what was in one of the newspapers out of Wilmington. I think I've sent you all that article. You know, that's where we're at. The bills are changing, you know, the House Bill 765 that I think I updated you all on at the last meeting. When it came out, it was 22 pages. They went back and made it better. It's now 33 pages, and they did nothing about housing. They added signs, and the fact that you can't regulate signs and something else to the bill. My understanding is, House Bill 765 especially, probably will not get out of committee and get to the floor. If it does, it will not pass. The bad thing is, they're going to do what they usually do with all the bills that they won't pass, that they can't figure out how to get it passed. They're going to jam it into the budget bill and force everybody to vote on it. So, you know, the budget's left the Senate. The Senate wrote the budget this session. It's over in the House. So my understanding is, the House is going to put it into the budget bill and send it back. What that does, I don't know, but usually is what happens. In that scenario was, you know, municipalities, counties, they get a lot of money for some projects that they want. Representatives put in projects that they would like to see done in their district, so the powers-to-be say, okay, if you want the money for your district, you got to vote for this bill, otherwise you're not going to get the money. And in that bill is all the stuff related to housing affordability that's not related to the budget. So, it's kind of where we're at right now. I've not heard anything, exchanged emails with Mayor Horn Monday, I think, after he sent his emails that he communicated with Representative Zenger. Y'all need to read that. That was pretty good, pretty good email back and forth. But the last I heard, that's kind of where it stands, is the concern is they don't clean the bill up, they just don't worry about it, and then they put it in the budget. So, you know, the league, contrary to what some of the representatives say, you know, they say the league is not at the table. All they're doing is saying no. The league's saying no, because all the municipalities who the league represents is telling the league, we're not in favor of the bill. So the league has not been invited to the table the last few times. So the league has not been invited to the table the last few times because the representatives didn't want to hear them. So we don't have, right now, we don't have really anybody there kind of at the table letting us know. Our representatives, I've been in contact with them, they've let us know when they hear something. So, which I'll pass along to you all when I hear it.
So the Board of Aldermen did pass a resolution in opposition to the Senate bills and the House bills that Curtis referenced and then a second resol-- I'm sorry, did I misspeak? The Board of Aldermen has taken up this issue twice. First was the Senate bill on the House bills and the board unanimously passed a resolution in opposition to supporting that these bills not happen. And that included the quasi judicial. And then there was a second discussion and this board adopted a resolution in opposition to House Bill seven six five. And that's been distributed to our delegation. And kind of what I've heard around Forsyth County is a lot of other of the jurisdictions have concerns about those bills. So this Board of Aldermen has taken action twice on those measures. Because we want everybody to be able to come and say their piece at a Board of Aldermen meeting and catch our arm at the grocery store and leave us a message and be fully engaged in the process of zoning decisions. Just because you're so well researched, I'll allow it, but it has to be very brief.
Very brief.
Okay. You can, you need to come back to the microphone, but very, very brief, Matt.
Matt Sin, for the record, one thing that they have added is this one oh four day period. If a developer files and there is no response in opposition by the government, automatically for the developer, which completely bypasses our government system, that should not be allowed in America.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other speaker from the floor this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the twenty twenty-four annual reports and twenty twenty-five budget requests. And first will be the Kernersville Auto Museum, and I'll recognize Jim Taylor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Taylor. I'm the founder and the curator of the Kernersville Auto Museum and I reside at seven two six Bluff School Road. I want to thank you folks for the support you've given the museum over the past several years and also for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of the museum. I've got good news. Last year, when I stood before you, I said in twenty-three, we had three thousand visitors to the museum. And I was projecting that we would have up to four thousand for twenty-four. Well, I missed it by twenty percent. We had five thousand visitors at the year of nineteen and twenty-four, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four. We had seventeen events during the year. Many of the events were by nonprofits here in our community. Birthday parties, anniversary parties, family reunions, workforce health, Christmas parties. One that really stands out quite well is Audrey Best with WXII featured the museum in A Place Called Home. A young man who was fifteen years old named Chris was a foster child and he was looking for someone to adopt him. And they featured him. And the reason they came to the museum was because he loved old cars. So I spent about thirty minutes with him just walking around the museum, letting him get in the cars and so forth. And Audrey was making comments and he loved every minute of it. I haven't been able to find out whether he has been placed in home yet or not, but it was a really good presentation and we got some really outstanding exposure in the community from that. Because so shortly after that, we had a large influx of visitors. And I thought, well, how did you know about the museum? Well, we seen it on A Place Called Home. So we haven't had the money to do a lot of advertisements, so most of it has been by word of mouth. And that was, that was really outstanding for us. Since we opened about three years ago, I would estimate that we have had visitors from every state within the Union. It's just amazing. I think last week, we had people in there from California, from Arizona, from New York. And they come here on business, they come here on vacation. And when they look up museum, we pop up and here they come. And if you haven't had an opportunity to look at the reviews that we're getting, it's just amazing, the comments that people are saying about this little museum and how excited they are and how proud they are to have it here in our community. We have, on TripAdvisor, we have a five point O rating. And on Google, we have a four point nine rating. So take an opportunity to look at some of those reviews and it actually will tell you a lot more than I'm telling you tonight about how people feel about the museum. The seniors really do love the museum. The nursing homes in the area are taking advantage of the museum. At times, we'll have three vans out in the parking lot from various different nursing homes. And most of them are with walkers or wheelchairs or a cane. And they come in and sometime will stay an hour or even longer. And the comments that they make will just about make tears come to your eyes because they just love these old vehicles. We're living our motto, where memories and history come alive. And it really does, the memories really come alive with these seniors. And it's wonderful to hear the stories that they can tell you about this particular car that they owned and what they did with it and where it came from and so on and so forth. So they all have a story to tell. So you need, you need several hours to hear all of these stories. And it's just amazing what they come up with. We now have fifty automobiles in the museum. We have, I'm proud that we have such a good variety. We have automobiles from Germany, England, France, Italy, Sweden, Thailand, and of course, many from the United States. And the oldest vehicle we have is a nineteen oh two Model T Depot Hack. And the newest is a nineteen twenty-three, excuse me, a two thousand twenty-three Corvette. So we spend a hundred years there and with the automobiles. But two thousand and twenty-five, we're off to a very good start. We have already had eight events so far. There was Phil, School Phil Day groups and a lecture, disabled group, graduation, a couple graduations, a baby shower and a birthday. So people in the community are taking advantage and they've seen that they can get together there and bring their friends in and their friends really get excited about having a birthday party. We've had two eighty-year-old birthday parties in the last four months. And both of them were surprised. They didn't know anything about it. And somehow or another, they were able to get them there and surprise them. So it was, it was quite a, quite a really good feeling to see that happen. Another event that that really kind of stands out in my mind is one of our dedicated visitors, I guess you would say, that come to the museum quite often. About six months ago, his daughter contacted me and asked me if I'd be willing to take her dad for a ride in the little French Citroen. She said he loves that car more than, more than life. And I said, I would be honored to do that. So he and his wife came and we took about a thirty-minute ride all through Kernersville. And little did I know at the time, he had pancreatic cancer. And so I got an email from his daughter three weeks ago saying her dad had passed away. And one of his final requests was that his celebration of life be held in the museum. And so two weeks ago, this past Monday evening, we gave them that privilege. And they were so, so pleased that we were able to do that for them. We never want to lose sight of our vision for the museum and that is to preserve the history of these old vintage and classic antique cars for our general public viewing for many, many years to come. Our goal is to educate and inspire the young with the history of these vehicles and help them understand what an important role these cars held in the development of our country. And so many of the young people that come in, in fact, most of them have never seen anything like this. And they just, they're, they are appalled by what they're seeing. Another program that will start next Wednesday at the museum that I am extremely excited about, Mr. Jim Longworth of Longworth Productions will start producing his weekly Triad Today in the museum. And he's indicated that he will probably like to be there for a year. And that's, that is every Wednesday. It will, and starting, starting next Wednesday, May the seventh. It airs every Saturday on ABC forty-five, Sunday on MY forty-eight and streams on WFM YTV. So I think we're, we're going to get a tremendous amount of exposure because the museum, he set up a table right in the front of the museum. And so all the cars will be behind in this production. And he, I believe he told me, he would be interviewing Senator Budd in two weeks. And next, next week, I believe he's interviewing the airport chairman of the Greensboro Authority and some of the board members. So I'm not all that familiar with Triad Today, but what little, what little he's told me about it seems like a really great, good program. It's been underway for several years. And I think it's going to be really outstanding for the museum. I'm really pleased with the collaboration that we've had between the Folly and the Gardens. We, we keep our rack cards in there and they keep ours. And quite often, people come walking into the museum and they've got one of our cards. Where'd you get that? Oh, I got that at the garden or I got that at the, the Folly, the Folly. So that's working, that's working really well. It's working really well. I think most of you know, we are open three days a week, Friday, Saturday, from ten to four P.M. and on Sunday afternoon from two to five P.M. And we're averaging now close to a hundred people during a weekend of three days. And we're looking at maybe adding another day down the road a little ways. I think Thursday might be the thing to do. As I think you know, we have all volunteer staff and nobody gets paid, not even the board of directors or the chairman. But, but they, the people that work and volunteer, they, they thank me for allowing them to do this, to host the museum. It's just amazing, you know? And I'm so appreciative of their dedication and their commitment. And I'm forever thanking them. And they said, why, thank, don't thank me. Maybe we should be thanking you for allowing us to do this. And they just really enjoy it. And we get a lot of nice compliments on our reviews about the hosts that are in the museum and how they handle, how they handle our visitors. So that's working out really well. Well, I hope that gives you a little better insight as to what's happening in the museum. It's far exceeding what I ever expected it would do. And I have no reason to believe that it won't, it'll just continue doing as it has done in the last several years. So with that said, again, thank you so much for your support. And if there's anyone has a question, I'd be happy to try to address it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate it, hearing your report. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, we are to our next presentation, and I'll recognize Senior Services.
Well, hello and good evening, I'm Adam Mayer and Board of Aldermen. My name is Mark Batten and I am the Vice President of Development at Senior Services. Our campus is at twenty-eight ninety-five Shore Fair Drive in Winston-Salem. And I do, at this end, a PowerPoint over, I'm not sure if it was received for this evening. Is that available for presentation tonight?
Do you have it?
I do have it on my, on my computer system.
Do you have it in a way you could email it to us or hand it to us on a flash drive?
Yes, I don't have a flash drive, but I did email it to Mr. Hooker and Ms. Haggard earlier this week.
Who did you send it to?
Mr. Hooker and Ms. Haggard in Finance.
Keith, do you have it?
Let me check, I don't remember seeing it.
I just want to make sure I, y'all see the references that I have.
Turn off your microphone for a minute and tell Keith your email address so he can look it up. Keith, do you need his email address to search it for it?
At the moment, I'm not able to get into my Outlook.
Okay. Kelly's not at the meeting, so she can't get into it.
I have my email up, so if perhaps you want to skip to Crisis Control and give him a chance to email it to me when we come back.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'll recognize Margaret from Crisis Control. Did you send it to somebody in advance? Oh. Okay.
Whoa, microphone. I have a very loud voice, so you probably heard everything.
Sorry, I had to turn it off to talk about the details of the search for the, that is, that is on me. My apologies.
Do I have to start over? I mean, do you want me to start?
If you started over, then everyone could hear you because the meeting is taped and some people watch it on YouTube. And so if you start over, they'll be able to hear you. Otherwise, they couldn't hear anything you just said.
Okay, happy to do that. Margaret Elliott, the Executive Director, Crisis Control Ministry. Our Kernersville office is here at four thirty-one West Bowden Hammer Street. Been in Kernersville area since nineteen seventy-seven. I, I work in the Winston-Salem office and we've been around for fifty-two years since nineteen seventy-three. I've been there for almost twenty-six years. So I'm very grateful to, and lived in Kernersville for about four years. So thank you for letting me come back home. Our mission at Crisis Control is to assist people in crisis to meet essential life needs and to move towards self-sufficiency. What I'd like to concentrate on a little bit tonight and the PowerPoint that you have printed in front of you is the fact that we're very, very excited about some upcoming renovations that we are going to have at our office here in Kernersville. So I know it's a little boring to look at some architectural drawings, so, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the goals of that renovation. And then I'll show you some pictures which are in your PowerPoint and explain why it's important, if that's okay. So our first goal for renovating our Kernersville office is to improve our clients' experience, to create a more welcoming and comfortable and private environment for those who are seeking assistance at Crisis Control. Our second goal is to enhance the volunteer and the staff workspaces. We have lots of volunteers that come. We have about fifty to sixty volunteers who come to our Kernersville office, who work in our food pantry, who do interviews for folks who are needing assistance to pay for their rent and their utility bills. And we have lots of folks that help do the administrative work as well. So providing updated functional spaces for them to better serve our clients and to support the whole team is goal number two. Goal number three is to increase accessibility, to make the building a little more easier to navigate for clients with mobility changes, challenges. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute when we talk about the renovation that we're doing in the food pantry area. Goal four is to expand our service capacity so that we can accommodate more clients and to, and to offer additional services to meet growing community needs. And five is to strengthen community impact, to demonstrate our commitment to Kernersville with a refreshed space. So very simple, simple goals there. The next two pictures on your PowerPoint are just what I referenced a minute ago, just some architectural drawings. So just in general, that first picture just has a whole lot of blocks, looks a lot of offices outside of the perimeter of a building. It includes, four of those spaces include the space for the food pantry. So in other words, in our Kernersville office, we have a food pantry that is, that consists of four rooms. It is not very easily navigated by folks going from room to room to room to room. So in the renovation, the reason we're really excited about this is that we look to take down some of the interior walls to make it look like, more like a miniature grocery store. So if you look at the next page, or don't look at two, two pages over, you'll see the renovation that we had in the Winston office where we made our food pantry seriously look like a miniature grocery store. My food pantry manager in, in Winston the other day said that it made her cry. One day when one of her clients was standing in the, in the middle of the food pantry, got a phone call, it was her son, and she said, "Son, I can't talk right now. I'm at the grocery store." She says, "Oh, yay, they think it's a grocery store." So it really does look like a grocery store. It adds to have a grocery store, to have a food pantry look like a grocery store. And we have a client choice food pantry. That means we don't pack a box of food and say, "Here, hope you like it." The food that is available around the room is food that the clients, the families can pick for their families, the food that they will actually eat, what they like. So there's very little waste. They take what they need, they take what they want, they take what their family will eat. So I think it adds dignity and respect at a, at a food pantry. So really happy about that. So we're really looking forward to Kernersville Food Pantry being a little more like a, a client, it is got a client choice food pantry. So we're very excited about that. It should start any day now. I think we've, we've kind of gone through all the approval processes here in terms of getting their permits and all that sort of stuff. We're almost there. I think maybe next week we might be there on the final, final leg of that. So thank you for, for letting us do that. The very last, or next to the last page has from twenty twenty-four, our Community Impact Report from Kernersville. We served more than three thousand people in the Kernersville area with food assistance, with housing assistance. And for us, that means helping people to pay for their rent or mortgage payments when they've experienced a temporary financial crisis. What happened this month to make it so that I cannot pay for my basic life needs? We also provide utility assistance, such utilities of, of every kind. And pharmacy, we do have North Carolina's first state licensed free pharmacy. In the Winston-Salem office, we do still interview folks in Kernersville for that service that go to Winston to pick up their medication. And we have other assistance that's provided as well, just based on the stories that people tell us when we walk in. I think what I really like about the philosophy of Crisis Control is that we take the time to listen to everybody's story and, and hope to respond with dignity and respect, of course, but also based on what they need. It kind of dictates what we do sometimes. So we're flexible and able, able to do that. So thank you all for your support. Oh, last page, most important, the pictures of the two staff members that work in Kernersville. Kathy Hoffner is the Director of our Kernersville Office. And David Richmond is our Client Services Coordinator. They are the boots-on-the-ground folks here that work in Kernersville. We have such a team. Today I was at an all-day-long staff retreat. I am very proud of the team that we have. We have nineteen staff members between the two offices. We are very different, but we are aligned and the same when it comes to the work and the services that we provide at Crisis Control. So we are very thankful to Kernersville for supporting our work. And we are grateful for your support last year. And that's the money we spent doing all those emergency assistance services that we provide. And this year, that money, the money, if you provide us money in twenty twenty-five, will be for Client Services. We are fortunate for the renovation to have a donor who has agreed to pay one hundred percent of the renovation cost. Yay, thank you. So the money that you all provide us will go directly to Client Services. So thank you very much and I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have some.
Are there any questions?
Where did you say y'all were located at?
Where? I'm sorry.
In Kernersville. Where's your location?
Four thirty-one West Bowden Hammer Street.
Okay.
Right beside July Fourth Park, Fourth of July Park.
Shepherd Center in Crisis Control.
Shepherd Center in Kerners, yeah.
Used to chair a building till Shepherd Center.
What's y'all's phone number out there?
Three, three, six, nine, nine, six, two, six, three, six.
Good deal.
All right. Come on by for a visit.
I just wanted to have that pass out to anybody in need.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for your report. And to you and your staff, we appreciate their, their work for others. Thank you very much.
All right, now I will recognize Senior Services, Mark Batten. Sorry about the mix-up on your PowerPoint.
Well, thank you for amending the schedule and then he gave me a USB. All right, thank you again for modifying the agenda. And hello, again, I'm Mark Batten, Vice President of Development at Senior Services, located at twenty-eight ninety-five Shore Fair Drive in Winston-Salem. First, I want to bring greetings to you on behalf of Lee Covington, our President and CEO. Due to a scheduling conflict, he could not be here tonight, but I'm very pleased to be with you this evening. So the core of our programs and services is focused on our mission, which highlights dignity and purpose. And so all of our programs and services keep older adults aged sixty or more living at home for as long as possible, aging with dignity and living with purpose. In addition, we seek to support those family care partners who care for their aging loved ones while they are at home as well through education and resources. And so we have been in Forsyth County for over sixty years, serving the older adult population. We have over a thousand volunteers who help support our programs and services, including delivering Meals on Wheels and also supporting programs and experiences at the Williams Adult Day Center, which is a program for older adults who are living with memory loss and/or frailty. We have an amazing staff of a hundred and twenty individuals, most of which who are out in the community doing our programs and services with the older adults in the community. We have a champion, a board of directors of over sixty individuals who are our voice every day in the community. And we have over sixteen hundred donors who ensure the sustainability of our programs and services here in Forsyth County. Eight programs and services, as I mentioned, are what we focus on. Aging Resources in our helpline is an information and referral service here in the community. They are just one phone call away and will seek to address information that folks may need. Creative Connections is our newest program, which focuses on arts and wellness as an experience in the community. Elder Care Choices is a benefit the legal corporations can opt into to offer their employees. Home Care and Living at Home sounds similar. Home Care is actually in-home care through Essential Service, but Living at Home is case management through social work, folks who do that. Meals on Wheels is our largest and longest-running service here in Forsyth County. And our other nutrition program is Senior Lunch. We do have one site in Kernersville at Corners Place Apartments. And then again, the Elizabeth and Tab Williams Adult Day Center, which I just mentioned. We operate annually with a nine point two million dollar budget. And you can see here on the screen the diverse revenue streams that make up that budget, the largest of which are our local, state and federal government grants, followed by program fee income for those individuals who can private pay for their services. But our focus is ensuring that anybody who needs our services, regardless of ability to pay, do have access to those. And then followed by the community folks who give donations to our agency. So let's take a high-level look at who we served in two thousand twenty-four. We served two thousand four hundred and eleven older adults. The average age was seventy-five. Ten percent were veterans, sixty-four percent identified as female, forty-one percent indicated that they do live alone, and thirty-nine percent live below the poverty line. We have seen an increase in the need for our services. Currently, our waiting list is approaching five hundred older adults who are waiting one service or another from Senior Services. And so while it's important to highlight the number of folks who we serve, you may be wondering, what does that boil down to as far as actual service? And so last year, through our Meals on Wheels program, Senior Lunch, and the Williams Adult Day Center, we provided two hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five hot nutritious meals throughout the year. Our helpline responded to over eleven thousand requests for information, assistance and referrals. And our in-home personal care staff and our case management staff provided over twenty-nine thousand hours of coordination for care to individuals, which is quite remarkable when you think about the need. And so now let's drill down into what that means for Kernersville. And so just want to point out first that your generosity with last year's funding of sixty thousand five hundred dollars went directly to supporting eight hot meal routes that are ran here in Kernersville. And again, the one Senior Lunch site, which is one of four that we offer here in Forsyth County at the Corner Place Apartments. And I invite you to join the Senior Lunch site on Monday, Wednesday or Friday from basically eleven-thirty to one o'clock to get a sense of what we offer at Senior Lunch. It's more than a meal, it's fellowship, it's education and outreach and activities. It's really a fun time and the staff have a great time leading those individuals for Senior Lunch. And so drilling down a little deeper here in Kernersville, we serve two hundred and eighty-nine older adults who have a Kernersville address and that represents eleven percent of total participants in our programs. Of the two hundred and eighty-nine, one hundred and eighty-four were receiving Meals on Wheels. Thirty-two were at our Senior Lunch site here in Kernersville. Twenty-nine were receiving home care services. Twenty-three were receiving case management coordination through Living at Home. And twenty-one were attending our Williams Adult Day Center, which is on our campus on Shore Fair Drive. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that our Day Center was named at the end of last year the best Adult Day Center in America by the National Adult Day Services Association. It's the second time we've won that designation and we're very proud of that. In addition, this year, the Day Center is celebrating fifty years of committed service here in the community. And so we're doing some really wonderful celebrations to celebrate the impact of the Williams Adult Day Center. So Meals on Wheels, since it is the main program that Town of Kernersville's funding has supported, I did want to bring some outcomes that resulted as a result of your support. And so ninety-six percent of Meals on Wheels respondents who responded to our survey reported that Meals on Wheels helps them to eat healthier foods. And that's a positive thing. Meals on Wheels is focused on ensuring older adults get one-third of their required daily nutrition to maintain their health. Ninety-six percent say they feel better once they have begun to receive Meals on Wheels. And then ninety-eight percent said it helps them to continue to live at home. And overwhelmingly, a majority responded that home-delivered meals has just helped them in general feel more alive and more present in their community. And so while stats are wonderful to present, I did have a quote here from one of our surveys from an individual who receives Meals on Wheels. And I think it really illustrates the, the impact. It's more than a hot meal through Meals on Wheels, it's actually a safety and an eye-to-eye check-in with a volunteer. Again, we have over a thousand volunteers every year who support our seventy-four routes, eight of which are in Kernersville. And so the participant said, "Sometimes you need to see someone that makes you smile, have a reason to get up, then you have a friend with a smile on their face. I feel I have a friend that loves me and that is a reason to live." So that's just one remarkable moment that's made possible from the funding that the Town of Kernersville has provided Senior Services over the last many years. And so with that, our twenty-five, twenty-six request remains level at the sixteen thousand five hundred dollars to help us sustain the eight hot delivery meal routes for Meals on Wheels in the Kernersville area. And before I got here this evening, I did pull some other information. As I mentioned, we do have, our waitlist for all programs is approaching five hundred. There are currently twenty-seven individuals in Kernersville who are awaiting hot meal delivery service through Meals on Wheels. That gives you a sense of the need that remains out there at this time. I also want to bring some information to you about our newest program, as I mentioned, Creative Connections. Mr. Covington may have presented last year about the new Intergenerational Center for Arts and Wellness that we opened up in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. So we've been open now for just about a year and a half and have had some wonderful experiences and programs that are happening. It is an unprecedented partnership model. We have twenty-one partners committed to the Generation Center, several of which who have dedicated office space in the center. If you have not been, again, I invite you out to tour it and I'd be happy to coordinate that with you. So you can get a sense of actually all things that are happening and the joy that is being experienced there. And so I do have a few photographs on the next slide to highlight some of the things that folks participate in. We have classes in movement and expression, as you can see on the far left photograph there. We offer pickleball, which I'm sure you all are aware has become very popular. And so we offer classes as well as game time for folks. And then in the lower right corner, you see an acrylic pouring class that's offered in collaboration with the Saltwood School for Visual Art. And so a lot of things are happening at the Integration Center that I hope you will get a chance to participate in. We did have last year, or from July twenty twenty-four until March of twenty twenty-five, we have hosted nearly eight thousand activities. we have hosted nearly eight thousand activities at the Generation Center. So I tell you it's a busy place, my friends, it's a, it's a very busy place. And over one thousand six hundred of those were focused on intergenerational activities. So as you can imagine from the title of the center, the Intergenerational Center, one of our focuses is bringing folks across generations together. And so we serve programs that have children as young as three years old to as old as a hundred or more in our program. So it's quite an amazing facility. We had just over thirty-nine thousand visitors since July of last year. And I'm pleased to report that about eighteen hundred of those were from Kernersville. And so folks here are getting out to experience the amazing programming experiences there at the Intergenerational Center. So we always tell folks to find your reason to come out. And so if you visit our website for the center, which is on your screen, generationscenter.org, you can find the events calendar and learn more about all the partnerships that are at the center. We have a wonderful cafe. It's open every Tuesday through Friday from eight until two. Hope you'll patron it and have a cup of coffee, have a meeting there. It's really a wonderful place to have conversation and to bring folks together. And lastly, I did want to mention that we recently published our two thousand twenty-five Aging Outlook and Service Report. I did bring a few copies that I hope can be distributed tonight to each of you all to review. The report highlights our direct services across our different programs, but also looks at data trends and analysis that we're keeping a close eye on as we foresee a population increase of those who are sixty or more here, here, here in our community, in the state, and nationally. So you can be sure that we continue to respond to the evolving and emerging needs of the older adult community. So again, I invite you to peruse that at your leisure. And so I thank you for your time this evening. Senior Services really is grateful for the support we receive from the Town of Kernersville. What I've shared tonight is just a little bit of our story and what's happening. And while there's still certainly a lot to do and more folks to serve to deliver our mission, we are so proud of what we've been able to do over the last many years. And again, the Town of Kernersville is an essential part of that story. We hope you will consider being a part of that still in the future. And so with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, I don't see any questions at this time. Thank you for your presentation, for the work you're doing for seniors.
Thank you all.
I've been out to the Senior Center for the meal distribution. It's quite amazing. But we appreciate all you do. Provides a very positive impact on many people's lives. All right, I think that is the end of our reports. So we are on to business items on our agenda, which brings us to item C. Consideration of an event request from Hentonk Sport, which is not the same as bocce balls, but similar.
Very similar. It is a request to have a tournament slash event at Ivy Redmond Park, May twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. They will have it in the parking lot as you go down Beeson Road on the left-hand side, just right before you get to the dog park. The reason it's coming to you all is they are asking to serve alcohol. It's not, we're going to have a beer truck now and just they'll have beer out there. We don't see this being a problem. It'll be in the confined area there with the parking lot. It's not going to be a tremendous amount of players, but they're looking to play over a period of three days out there. They've been out playing now. I think they were actually in the building the other day playing, but they play most of the time in the parking lot there. So, and it is very similar to bocce ball. They throw a hollow metal ball or steel ball at a wooden chip, and whoever gets closest to it scores some points. And it's a combination of horseshoes and cornhole and bocce ball. So that's why it's coming to you all for approval is because of alcohol. We're probably going to change up the event form this year because we are seeing more requests for events in, in the parks. They don't need the same form as an event downtown that's serving alcohol because we're not closing off route or anything like that. They're doing it in the park. But, so we're working on that. So the next one you see will be a little bit different form, most likely.
I like that idea of changing the form to meet the questions we actually need to know.
Correct, yeah. I mean, it's, some of these aren't, you know, they don't really, they're not relevant to doing it in a park. Really, for a park, all you kind of need is, here's where we're going to have it in the park. You'll have the officer, and this is the date. Everything else, kind of all those questions, of course, we'll have the insurance questions and all of that. But the other questions on this form are more relevant to downtown and to larger events. So.
Just since you brought up revising the form, I noticed this form on the front has a date of the form. It might be a good idea to put a revision date at the bottom of the form, so you have it on each page. Just so there's no misunderstandings if something wrong gets inter- interleaved.
Yep. That's a good point. We'll do that. So that's what that is about. Be glad to answer any questions.
So you need the board to approve the?
Yes, ma'am, if you desire.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question, ma'am. Courtesy, there are public safety requirements built into this as well. In other words, it's going to be within the park.
Correct, yeah. And they still have to do the same. As far as the alcohol goes, they still have to do the same as they would. If they were downtown somewhere, they have to have it, it has to be out kind of like a beer garden type setup. They have to have one area there, have to have it monitored, you know, have to have an officer, things like that. They have to have their ABC license, all of that. So yes, that, that part still applies to it. And then we've been working with them to make sure that they understand that those guidelines, though the form may not be relevant, those guidelines, those guidelines still apply.
Do you have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion for approval by Alderman Gorham. Second by Alderman Penix, all in favor. It's unanimous. All right, we are to item D, consideration of a resolution authorizing the sale of real property located at eighteen-seventy-three Teague Lane.
This is the property that we received an offer on. The board accepted the offer at the last meeting. We're required by general statute to post it for ten days for upset bid. We had no upset bids, so the offer of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand is the final offer. As I told the board, it's seven acres of property on Teague Lane that we, in essence, traded for probably four years ago, maybe. The initial property that we purchased was to be used for a fire station. We have since renovated the Beeson's Crossroads Fire Station. We're in that now. This property is some property that we don't anticipate needing. So we're okay with selling that if the board so chooses to go through with that.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move we approve, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I've got a motion for approval by Alderman Apple.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor. It's unanimous. All right, we are now to the flashing beacon equipment for Teague Lane, which would benefit Caleb's Creek.
It would, and this was something the board asked about maybe back in January, I think, when the, some of the homeowners association that Salem Crossing came up with some issues about the crossing guard there at Caleb's Creek and speed limit. As you all know, the DOT agreed to lower the speed limit in that area, and they also agreed for the flashing equipment to be installed. You have in your packet a cost of the equipment and labor cost, and then the material costs. So total cost to do that is twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. And the town will be responsible for that cost. But it would be the, the flashing lights, similar to what we have at, at other school zones. We did the exact same thing at Kernersville Middle School, in which we worked with DOT to install that, and we also paid for that. So I can tell you from having traveled through this area quite a bit, it is, I mean, it's pretty hectic and it's something that, you know, may help save someone from being hit there crossing over.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we erect, buy the equipment and erect the school crossing sign on Teague Lane.
Are you good with that, Chair? Who made the second?
I'll say.
Okay, I heard motions and seconds all over the place. Got a motion by Alderman Barrow. I have a second by Alderman Penix, all in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, we are to the next item. Mr. Swisher.
Madam Mayor, you have in your packet the memo from Chief Alderman regarding some old radios that we have in the fire department. We have replaced some radios in the fire rescue department, and we have ten radios that, that we no longer need. And when approached with, by different fire departments in the area, we do work with them to sell them our old radios. And we have been approached by Union Cross Volunteer Fire Rescue Department, who provides mutual aid to us, and we provide it to them, about purchasing those radios. We put a fair market value on those radios of about a thousand and seventy-five dollars. So we are recommending the board to declare those surplus and allow us to sell them to Union Cross Volunteer Fire Department for ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor. It's unanimous. Okay. The next item is the auditing services contract.
The board approved, I think it was last month, the three-year contract for the auditing services. And as I told you then, yeah, we'll have to come back and get it approved every year. So this is approving the contract with Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, for them to do that audit. The price is not to exceed sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars for that audit. For the, and that'll be for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. And that is the same auditing firm that the board approved for the three-year contract as well.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion to approve by Alderman Gorham, second by Alderman Barrow, all in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, we are to the consent agenda. I would like to remove item B. All of the following matters are considered to be routine by the Board of Aldermen and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item. A, approval placeholder minutes for March twenty-sixth, regular meeting. And I did want to say that was a meeting that we canceled, and so placeholder minutes just create a record that, oh, yeah, that's right, we canceled that meeting. So, and item C, consideration of appointments to volunteer boards and commissions. Is there anyone else on the board who'd like to remove any of the items or in the audience? Seeing none, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and C?
I would move, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I've got a motion for approval by Alderman Barrow.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor. It's unanimous. All right, item B. I have been editing this resolution for at least the past twelve years to change the wording in the last paragraph, but somehow Forsyth County keeps sending it to us the same way. So I'd like to make that small change in the last paragraph that this resolution be included in the minutes of the Board of Aldermen and that a copy be furnished to the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission. So it'll be a substitution of the current wording to change it to that this resolution be included in the minutes. If you can make that change, Keith. All right, this is a annual recognition that we do. Unlike many of the things that are proclamations, we've traditionally done this by resolution. Counties throughout Forsyth County do, and then different nonprofits and sometimes the town of Kernersville participate in various programs during that month. It's been anything from tours of historic cemeteries to classes at the Kerners Valley on restoring, sashing on antique windows, weaving a tobacco basket, just a, a lot of, of wide, wide variety of events throughout the county. Those are a few that have been in Kernersville in the past, but there've been many, many more. A lot of times there's a theme, but it's always a lot of fun. So there is a lot of information typically available on social media and online. And we'll have folks from the Historic Preservation Commission likely come to the meeting on Tuesday to present it. We'll hear a lot of the details for what their plans are this coming year. All right, do I have a motion to approve item B? Got a motion by Alder, Alderman, um, Apple. Sorry, too much talking.
Second.
I've got a second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor. It's unanimous. And we are moving on to briefing on the May sixth meeting. Mr. Swisher.
Madam Mayor, May sixth meeting. You have three ceremonial presentations, speakers from the floor, and the consent agenda.
Okay.
And that's it.
Do you have anything you anticipate adding?
Not right now, no.
Okay. All right, any questions about the items? It's good timing. We're going to have a few Aldermen not at the meetings, so it's good timing for us not to have a anything that has a lot of discussion and debate in. So. All right, we are moving on to tonight's town manager's report.
I have two items. I actually have one item, and Ms. Garner has one. My item is the nominations committee met yesterday to make, to discuss applications for boards and commissions. And they are making the following recommendation to fill an unexpired term. I'll just read through all of the, all of the appointments, and then you can vote on them as, as a group, unless you wish to pull somebody out. So the committee makes the following recommendation on an unexpired term on the Board of Adjustment effective immediately and ending on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. That would be appointment of Jeffrey Manter as a regular in-town member, changing from alternate in-town member effective immediately to fill the unexpired vacant seat with the term ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. Is that correct? Twenty-twenty-five?
He's filling Joanne's term.
That's correct.
Yes, the, the, the unexpired term expires June thirtieth of this year.
All right. And then we made the following recommendations for three-year terms beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-eight. Sister, Sister City Commission, reappointment of Ray Smith as a member. Recreation Advisory Board, reappointment of Wade Hampton as a member. The Community Appearance Commission, reappointment of Kay Dishar and Imogen Lamb as members. The Planning Board, reappointment of Jim Fradenberg and Tom McDaniel as in-town members. And Nathan Meyer as an ETJ member, and that is, would be pending confirmation by the county commissioners. And on the Board of Adjustment, reappointment of Jeffrey Manter as a regular in-town member. Russ Parmalay, Lance Antio, and Joe Ornstein, also as regular in-town members.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Gorham, second by Alderman Apple, all in favor. It's unanimous. So we appreciate the service of these individuals on our boards and commissions.
And then the other item is Ms. Garner.
We are working on the comprehensive plan. You approved the contract for Tesco Associates and Friesen Nichols a couple months ago. And several of you serve on the Steering Committee with members of the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. We spoke at the April Steering Committee meeting about having a joint and special called meeting between the Board of Aldermen, the Planning Board, and the Steering Committee on May twelfth at five PM here in the council chambers. So Mayor, if you would call that official meeting on behalf of the Board of Aldermen. And then also on May thirteenth from six to eight at the Paul J. Senior Botanical Gardens, we'll have our first community open house. So I hope everybody will come out that night. It's drop-in. There will be several tables and stations, including activities for children to learn about the comprehensive planning process, as well as give us your feedback about. about the comprehensive planning process, as well as give us your feedback about the future of Kernersville. We will be at Spring Folly this weekend. We'll have staff, we'll have a table Friday night and most of the day Saturday. So we'll be handing out flyers about this and then passing out information about the survey that is going live on our website here shortly. You can access the website by going to plankernersville.com, or you can visit our town page, and we have a landing page that'll take you to that website where you can take the survey. So come visit us at Spring Folly, if anybody's at Spring Folly, but we hope you'll come out to the community open house to give us your feedback. This plan will be best suited if we have a lot of community input, so we hope everybody comes out for it.
So is there a Board of, a Planning Board meeting that night?
There is. So that's why we're meeting at 5:00, so that way Tuscan and Fries and Nichols will have plenty of time for their presentation, and to conclude by 6:30 for the official Planning Board business meeting.
So I know we generally like to have meetings a little bit after 5:00. Mr. Barrow, do you think that this could work for you? Okay. Okay. Mr. Apple, are you good with that? Out of town? Okay. Mr. Gorham?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Penix? Okay. It looks like we can have a majority of the board there. So Chris can usually make things like this work when he's in town. So, and then, Mr. Barrow, if you can't come when the meeting starts, just join us as soon as you can.
You do, thank you.
We can catch you up on, I think it's going to be, I think the big thing is to have us all get to meet the consultants, and a lot of the people on the Steering Committee are on the Planning Board, and so it's just, and some Board of Adjustment people are on the Steering Committee too, so it's just a time when a lot of people will already be coming to Town Hall for the Planning Board meeting.
I think their presentation will be about some of the insights that they've gleaned from poring through our permit data for the past several years and many other statistics and facts about Kernersville. So I think they're going to kind of give an overview about the state of the town from a development standpoint, so it should be really interesting information.
And we'll record it, correct?
We can get with IT about that. That's a great idea.
It would be a good idea in case somebody missed it, if you wanted to be there. All righty. So it's less, it's more about information, less about taking actions. We would, we would be voting on things related to the plan at a later meeting.
Correct. This will just be informative. It is open to the public, so if anybody would like to drop in to see that before coming to the open house on Tuesday, that would be great, but I think it will be mostly informational rather than taking official action.
Okay, that's wonderful. And Keith, could you publish the meeting notice for that date and time?
Yes.
And this location? And then also, if we need a meeting notice for the open house, in the event that all of the Aldermen would like to also be at it?
I can do that.
Okay. Just informational that there might be, there might be a majority of the board at that meeting, but no business or, no votes are expected to be transacted that evening. Curtis, have I missed anything? Okay, all right. Ms. Garner, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our staff has been working with a lot of background information to have the consultant be aware of some of the zoning challenges we've had in the community, some acreage that needs to possibly be redeveloped, and an effort to answer some of the questions that the Planning Board members have had over the years as to kind of the requests we have and how it fits in the plan, and just do a really good update of our comprehensive plan. It's been a while since we've done it. That's why we approved this study, and, and really, you know, a lot has changed recently. So it's, it's going to be, I hope, I hope, a pretty positive effort. And I think Chris Thompson's on the Steering Committee. He's not here tonight, but I think he would agree that it's a pretty impressive Steering Committee, bringing a lot of expertise to it, and the consultants are very, seem to be very good and well-suited to work with our community in this endeavor. So, and there is a table at the Spring Folly. You may know exactly where you're going to be by now at the Spring Folly.
I have been told it's somewhere in the vicinity of the Penix Building.
Well, that's, that's the best location.
So.
So somewhere in the vicinity of the Penix Building, you can stop by and see Catherine, members of the Steering Committee, and there'll be an option, an ability to voice some opinions as to the planning.
We will have a, we will have a poster that asks you to jot down on a sticky note, what is your vision for the future of Kernersville? So we'll be collecting those, like a collection of sticky notes, and then we have a coloring sheet for children that asks them the same question to draw their vision for the future of Kernersville. Hope to include some of those in the actual plan document, so.
Super, thank you. All right, is there anything else? All right, we are to matters to be presented by the town attorney.
Madam Mayor, I don't have a report tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, matters to be presented by the mayor and Board of Aldermen. Mr. Barrow?
I don't have anything.
Madam Mayor, so town must be cruising along pretty good.
Thank you. Mr. Apple?
Madam Mayor, I just want to, reverting back a little bit to our House Bill 765, Curtis, is that the correct number?
Yes.
I just want to be sure that folks understand what the current status of that bill, if adopted in its current form, would do. It would lift from the Board of Aldermen, from your Board of Aldermen, you elect us all, the ability to do such things. To do such things as require minimum square footage in a particular neighborhood for a house, to require off-street parking for any number of cars, for even that five-unit addition of housing in single-family neighborhoods. And as was mentioned before by a wonderful speaker from the audience out here, as was mentioned before, it places personal liability on your elected officials if we deviate from that. In other words, if we actually listen to you, God forbid, and take an action based upon your input at a public hearing, developer has a right to sue us individually and go after our house and our car and our dog and everything else. So I can't overemphasize the importance of your letting Representative Zinger and anyone else in the House, the North Carolina Legislature, know that this is a bad bill. We have certainly been emphatic, and unanimously so, by the way, your board, in insisting on the elimination of anything that will take away your most direct voice to what affects your daily lives by your local government. But there's not going to be anything we can do about it unless we kill that bill. So I couldn't agree with you more. It seemed, it is about power, and it is about money, and neither of which should govern how we, sitting before you, having been elected by you, respond to your public sentiments on such issues. So please, please, let these folks hear from you and tell them, no, no, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Apple. Mr. Gorham?
No comments.
Thank you. Mr. Penix?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, the Spring Folly is around the corner. The excitement is starting to buzz around town, so be sure to stop downtown this weekend. It kicks off at 6:00. We actually have a kickoff ceremony right before the first musical group, right there behind the former library currently housing the Salvation Army in the parking lot there. Are a lot of civic groups selling food, but we have a stage and a little kickoff there at 6:00 PM, and then the evening goes on from there, returning with car shows and crafts on Saturday, and rides into the evening and live music again, and then Sunday it winds down to Harmon Park. So hopefully we'll have wonderful weather, and we'll see all of you there. There's, is there any business before the Board of Ald, oh, and to thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing that and all the many volunteers who make it possible. We appreciate all the civic groups and individuals that come out and help make the Spring Folly happen in our community. So, is there any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion by Alderman Gorham. Second from Alderman Barrow. All in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us.